This morning, this time I will call the March 26th Pauline County Board of Commissioners Work Session to Order, and we're glad to have elected officials like Sheriff Gellrich and Timmy Henderson, City Councilman for Dallas. And I don't think I'll let anybody out today. We are very, uh, let me ask Brian to bring the list forward. Also ask Robbie Finley, Director of the Pauline County Adult Advocacy Association. Thanks, man. I've come forward so honored to have you here, Robbie, to bring us our indication and sing the Star-Spangled Banner for us.
I have more than 34 now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then lead us in the indication, stand at your age, please.
See, you guys just improved in here. That means I got more than 34 minutes. I got Brian on this mission here.
That's it.
Yep.
Let's pray.
Father God, thank you so much for the opportunity to come into your presence with this group of people the way we are right now. Pray, Father, that you'll just bless this commission, give them wisdom, insight, discernment, Father, that the decisions they have to make day in and day out, Father, while they also have to run their own businesses and manage their personal lives and love on their families as well. So just pray, God, that you'll bless them and guide them, give them the strength that they need to persevere as they do that, and hopefully as they just continue to try and make Pauline a place where we want our grandkids to grow up and work and prosper as well too, Father, and that we can be a beacon to other counties in this state and maybe even across the nation as well. Just pray, God, that you'll guide them in that. Thank you for the people here that have things before them. Pray, God, just you'll guide them as well and bless the businesses in this county and all the families likewise. Just thank you for all that you do, and God may people look at Pauline County constantly and see us getting more and more in harmony and as somewhere that they want to live and do business, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I meant to thank God even more for what you've done here last year.
Amen. Thanks so much, Robbie. The March 12th, 2019 Work Session Minutes and the March 12th, 2019 Board Meeting Minutes are available for your review. Under announcements, I love the Pauline, their positively Pauline segment, and I haven't seen this one, so I'm looking forward to seeing it and listen, watch it together.
I'm Steve Mates. I'm the Public Information Officer for Pauline County Fire and Rescue. On December 9th, a 28-year-old man was sleeping, and his fiancee looked over and he was in cardiac arrest. She started CPR. Her mother was there. She called 911.
911, what's your emergency?
On the night of this call, I was a one key as a call taker, and what that means for us, that means I answered non-urgency and 911 call. In this call, she provided me the address. I verified it with her very early on, learned that he was not sleeping. So what I did is I sent that for dispatch, and then I worked on starting CPR with her.
Eight minutes later, rescue crew and engine crew arrived on the scene.
(screaming) Arriving, the rescue crews grabbed him here to go lay his head in the house, and our engine crew is going in first without gears to check to see if it's going on.
Arrived inside the bed first. Well, we didn't notice that fiancee was performing CPR on the patient. It was very effective CPR. That 911 dispatch actually wasn't instructing her on how to do this CPR. With that, it played a vital role in this patient's survival.
More equipment came upstairs and started getting him prepped, getting set, and the E D on him continued doing CPR. And at that time, the A E D said to shock him.
The first shock, somebody had felt a pulse. I remember radioing back in, our dispatch saying there was a shock delivered and we had a pulse. And then I remember the A E D telling him perform CPR.
If no pulse, start CPR.
We continued doing CPR at that time. We had a cycle of no shock advised. We had another cycle of shock advised.
Shock advised.
Shocking him a second time, in which case he actually came back again. And we put him back on oxygen and got him on a backboard quickly and got him into the ambulance to get into the hospital. None of that probably would have meant much without dispatch coaching the fiancee through chest impressions and maintaining chest impressions before we even got there.
Go to the American Heart Association website, and you can look up local classes. They have classes for the public.
Everybody takes E P R lessons, learning how to do it. It could be your husband, it could be your son, it could be your daughter, it could be anybody that you love. You could be the difference in if you're alive or not.
Awesome. I'd like to announce a town hall meeting that I called for March the 28th, which is just two days, two nights away, March 28th, at 7:00 p.m. starting strikes. Some or all commissioners will be there in departments. The only thing we will not be talking about in any depth is the budget. We're going to have two additional town hall meetings in April and May and just talk about the budget, so look forward to that. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Lead, New Cases Officer Amber Aiken with the Pauline County E 911 Center and her supervisor, Mr. David Lumper, to lead us in this presentation.
I'm not really her supervisor, but I think you're pretty good. It's a privilege and honor to be able to present this to Amber this morning, and before I get started, I have a story to tell, but it won't give me a lot to hold. Back several years ago, in the old 911 center, some of you have been in there, but about once a year, we would lose power and lose heat, power, lose air during the summertime. It inevitably occurred in July or August. And so this time, it was in one of those months, it ended up like 110 degrees inside that room. We could not stop working. We still had 911 calls coming in. But we brought in these portable air conditioners, and they reduced the temperature inside the building to a comfortable 98. But with all the equipment that we have in there, the temperature just stays up. We dropped our dress coats for the day, and we told everybody to just come in and dress comfortably. We were wearing shorts and tank tops wherever we could withstand the heat. So when I come to work that day, I walked in, and Amber has these really bright orange shorts on. And they were like orange reflective shorts, and she called them her D O T shorts. So they're just for just a little, that's kind of stuck in my head all these years that throughout all this, we're still working in these 100-degree temperatures, even though we had to come in in shorts and tank tops to get our jobs done, so. But today, we'll specifically talk about Amber's work over the last few months. She began her employment with Pauline County 911 in 2013, and then in 2017, she was promoted to the Lead Communication Officer. And what that means is that she is an assistant shift supervisor, and part of her responsibilities are training new communication officers and mentoring new communication officers, and even helping with training with the senior officers on her shift. During a period of time from October 2018 to January 2019, we were short of supervisor on her shift. So during that time, she stepped up to the plate, and she assumed the role of an interim supervisor. So in addition to her training responsibilities, she was also actively leading the entire shift during that time period. She was also responsible for supervising a trainee who was on call-taking extension, and she was also serving as a mentor to a new trainer during the same period. The trainee who she was actually helping through their extended training period said that she had really positive things to say about Amber, and she said that she has a talent to be direct in the information that she provided, and at the same time, she comes across as caring toward her trainer, her trainees. Many of the ways that she went about coaching her employees worked so well during that time period that she was acting supervisor, that she was asked to create a model that was wanted to be used as an agency-wide way for our supervisory staff to coach their employees in a more proactive manner. Even our senior supervisors sometimes struggle with the workloads, but the moreover, added responsibility that Amber excelled and continues to excel. She displays an uncanny ability to manage her shift with efficiency, meeting deadlines, and managing her workload without compromise. She's an excellent, well-rounded employee, and she continues to embody the spirit of our mission statement, which is keeping our community safe one call at a time. If you would, join me in thanking Amber for her work and her dedication.
While we're getting set up for a picture, suitable for framing, the Public Safety Appreciation is going to be ordered to Amber Aiken, who recognizes an outstanding service to the community, presented by the Pauline County Commissioners. Amber, thank you so much for your work. It did know this is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation here to present to Ivy Katz, who's the Executive Director of Pauline Child Advocacy Center. This Ivy Katz, I'll put you before the meeting, or if you hear her, there she is, with the blue ribbon. While you're coming up to the front also, Ivy, let me read this resolution, this proclamation, which says, "Whereas children are the embodiment of innocence and hope for the future, every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. Sadly, child abuse is a reality, a problem we must relentlessly combat through awareness and action. Whereas every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many, and that protecting our children is one of our highest priorities. It is vital that we all do our part to ensure that our youth are safe and here in the opportunity to have happy childhoods. Whereas there are no excuses for child abuse and neglect, but there are many consequences, some of which last a lifetime. Therefore, it is critical that children's advocacy groups, community organizations, government groups, community organizations, and others come together to form a network of support that can reach out to those in need. When abuse or neglect does occur, individual citizens have a duty to report at the appropriate authorities. This month, we asked citizens of Pauline County to join the Pauline County Child Advocacy Center to fight child abuse. By raising awareness of this issue and standing up for the safety of our children, we can help prevent child abuse and allow our young ones to look forward to bright futures. Therefore, it is resolved that I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Pauline County Board of Commissioners, be hereby proclaim April of 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Pauline County, and encourage the citizens to show that they care by committing themselves to fighting child abuse and neglect."
We appreciate that the Commission acknowledged in April and Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. It's real important to us as a community, working together with law enforcement and child protective services and other agencies to make sure the children of Pauline County are safe and have a place to come and talk about things that they need to talk about. So we appreciate all the support, and we are selling blue ribbon bows, we are painting Pauline blue, and the Commission building is the first building in Pauline County now that has bows on all the main doors. So we do appreciate your support in that area. And if you're interested in painting part of your area in Pauline blue, please give us a call, and we'll make sure you get a ribbon. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Well, we're delighted to have some special guests with us from the Atlanta Regional Transit Link Authority. I've got the Director, Chris Tomlinson. I've known Chris for a couple of years, and he's actually heading up this all metropolitan Atlanta area project and effort. So he's going to tell us where the Atlanta Transit Link is now and where we're going to be. Chris, thanks for taking me here.
Thank you, Chairman Carmichael, members of the Commission. It's my pleasure to come out to Pauline County, tell you a little bit about this, and we're a state authority, and just looking forward to working with Pauline County in the months and years to come on this initiative. So the, excuse me, the Atlanta Regional Transit Link Authority, it's a new state-level authority that's focused on what are we doing in the metro Atlanta, the greater metro Atlanta region in the area of looking at transit and what it means. And we're talking transit in all its forms. You have everything from what we call traditional fixed route transit, a lot of people think about MARTA and things like that. But transit's broader than that. You know, I know Pauline County has a dial-and-ride service. It's really anything that a community may be looking at to move people en masse, be it scheduled bus or train service, as well as on this on-demand transit. Are there things that we can be doing at the state level that can assist communities to understand what, if anything, transit may mean for them? This is a new state-level authority that was signed into law last year through House 12930. And what it did for the first time at the state level was create an entity, an award that's focused on specifically, again, what transit may mean for metro Atlanta. Trying to have a representative look, this new entity has a very unique setup in terms of its board. It's a 16-member board, 15 voting members. The Commissioner and Department of Transportation, Mr. Russell McMurray, is a non-voting member. The other 15 voting members are comprised of one-third that are appointed at the state level, so five members appointed at the state. The Governor has one appointee. The Lieutenant Governor and the Speaker each have two appointees. Whoever the Governor appoints serves as the Chair of the Board, and that, the Chair is the Dominique Charles Subtle of Georgia Power, you see in the upper-left corner. The remaining 10 positions are selected through a process of local caucuses that are made up of state reps, state senators, county commission chairs, who touch one of 10 districts. We look at a 13-county area, it's divided into 10 transit districts, and they elect their board members. This is a very similar process to, similar to the way that members of the State Transportation Board, GDOs, Board are chosen. So what you have on the screen in front of you are the current 16 members of this board. And then the board member who represents Pauline County, it's a gentleman named Todd Preste. He's a resident, actually, in Cobb County, neighboring Cobb County, but he represents what we call the ATL District 4. And at any time, I'm more than happy to put him in contact directly with the Commission. And of course, as Chairman Carmichael mentioned, we go way back to my days at D O T, so to give a direct line of contact to the current Executive Director. That's a little bit about the background of the structure of the organization, and I would point out, as far as I know, that this is the only state-level entity where again, two-thirds of the board membership are selected through the local process. That's a direct reflection on the fact that no matter what level of transit or transit activities are happening throughout metro Atlanta, a significant portion of that funding is coming through local sources. So in the case of even Pauline County, dial-and-ride, you're able to access some federal funds, but there is money coming from your general budget to help support that service. The composition of this organization recognizes the fact that so much of what a county needs and how it's funded comes from local sources, so they want to make sure that the representation of this entity at the state level had significant local input. But what is the ATL and what will it do? There's really two core activities or functions of the ATL. One has to do with regional transit planning. And so the ATL was charged with coming up with an overall regional transit plan. This will be a comprehensive plan that lists any transit projects that are going to receive or are going to buy, be buying for either state or federal transit funds. So if there's a project happening anywhere within this 13-county region, and if the plan's to seek federal funding, it needs to be part of this regional transit plan. So we'll be creating this regional transit plan. I'll tell you a little bit more about that, and trying to prioritize all those projects in the region into one comprehensive plan. But also be putting forth regional transit policies and standards. This is to help us take a uniform approach where it makes sense on some of these transit practices and policies, because we think that'll give us a competitive advantage when we're competing on a national level for these federal funds. There is specific discussion in the bill around branding, and there's been a lot of focus on that, especially around the city of Atlanta area, on the ATL logo, you see at the bottom of the screen of where it's going to be used. For example, right now, on the MARTA system, they're now adding this logo to show that it's part of this comprehensive network. And we'll also be going to be putting forth an annual report and audit of the transit services that are happening throughout the entire region. Think of it as a place where you'll be able to see reported the current state of transit, if you will, amongst metro Atlanta. The regional transit plan is going to have two primary components. We're going to list any projects that are looking at moving forward in a six-year window, and then a long-term window, like a 20-year horizon. These time periods were just picked out of the blue, but they line up with federally required plans. One is called the TIP, or the Transportation Improvement Program, and this is already a list that is put together by the Atlanta Regional Commission, which lists any projects that are planning to receive funding and move forward within a six-year horizon. So when it comes to anything that's being transit, this plan will be reflective of things that are going to go into this federally required project and program list. It'll also include any projects that we consider reasonably significant, meaning even regardless of the funding source, if it has a ripple effect throughout the region, you would be able to find those projects listed in the ATL's plans. And by the way, we are on track to produce the first regional transit plan before the end of calendar year 2019. Now, how does that relate, though, again, back to maybe local priorities? One of the things the ATL will be doing is once we have this plan and we are identifying projects, we're hoping to be able to bring the influence of the state to help secure and make sure dollars flow from the federal government into our region. One of the ways we would do that is through issuing letters of support that would go along with the grant applications. In the area of transit, especially when it comes to federal funding, there tends to be two pots of money. One, we call formula funds. These are funds that flow through for any existing transit services based on either how many passengers are served, how many miles are covered, et cetera. But the other pot of money at the federal level is what we call discretionary grants. These we have to compete for, and we're competing not only on a local or regional basis, but on a national basis. We're hoping by taking this regional approach and bringing hopefully the influence of the Governor, members of the congressional delegation, we can increase the chance to bring those dollars back into this region. This type of comprehensive approach, we think, will give us a competitive edge against other parts of the country. So one component I was talking about is the planning. The next is funding. House 12930 included a new provision for counties to consider for transit funding. It comes in the form of a new type of T S P L S, or transit-specific T S P L S. This allows any of the 13 counties to consider doing the S P L S for a list of transit-specific projects. And if there is such a list of projects, counties have the option of doing an up-to-1% sales tax for up to 30 years. I've had many people ask me, usually offline, especially elected officials, who on earth would want to go in front of their community, their constituents, talking about a S P L S for up to 30 years? I would say two things. One, the keywords are up to, it doesn't have to be any specific length of time, and the same thing with the percentage. It could be size for a list of projects, and it could be any increment below 1% or 1 penny in .05 same increments. But the reason that this one allows for the 30 years is unlike a traditional T S P L S where normally you're looking at some type of capital project, building something, paying it off within a five-year period, that's the typical timeframe, this allows counties the option of looking at not only building whatever the project is, but providing a source for the ongoing operation and maintenance through that sales tax. So it's an option, it doesn't, I want to be clear, it doesn't require anyone to do something for 30 years or the 1%, but that was one of the reasons. It was to identify the fact that these projects have ongoing operation and maintenance costs, and normally with a traditional T S P L S, once it's built, you're looking at other traditional forms of paying for that upkeep. This allows that same funding mechanism to be used on the operation and maintenance Oh, also, and we're pretty far away from MARTA's territory, but this is fundamentally different than the way, say, MARTA's funding works. Those counties that joined MARTA, that sales tax is pooled amongst all those counties. They have representation on that board and sort of decide where the money is needed to go. This one is county-specific. You know, most of all, we're talking about regional. If this type of T S P L S is done, that money is assessed, collected, and legally must be spent within the borders of that county. It can't be spent outside of the borders of the county that was to put in place such a T S P L S. Turning back to the planning process, and I already mentioned, our plan is to come up with the first regional transit plan before the end of calendar year 2019. So right now, what we're doing is we're coming up with what is the evaluation or the prioritization process that's going to lead to a listing and ranking of projects in the plan. So we're coming up with and developing that process. You can see the schedule, we've had a number of workshops with transit planning professionals from around the region, and we'll be coming back in front of the ATL Board, one at the committee level early in May. We're hoping them to adopt, again, not the plan, but just the process for developing the plan by late May of this year. From there, we're going to turn to working on pulling together an actual plan, so there'll be a call for projects, project sponsors who are interested in having a project listed on the plan. That call for projects will happen sometime this summer, so then we can stay on track to produce the first plan by the end of this year. What the Board has done is adopted a set of governing principles that should guide the work of the staff in working on the plan and prioritization. And they're looking at everything from economic development and land use to sustainability, equity, and also return on investment on these projects. One of the reasons the state created the ATL is it was in recognition of the fact that we're hearing from more and more when it comes to potential companies coming into the area, they're asking questions about transit and connectivity to workforce. This goes far beyond just the expansion of existing transit networks around Fulton, Decatur, et cetera. But what are we doing to connect up the driving out workforces that we have here to other activity centers in and around our communities? And so from the And so from the economic development standpoint, that was, that and the return on investment, those are the two drivers coming from the Board, really from the state. We've had three board meetings to date. I already told you what's coming up in May. And really, you can just sort of really see an outline of the upcoming board meetings for the rest of the year and when we're planning on adopting plans or doing the annual report. I would point out the line or the road that says August 8. Another provision of House Bill 930 allows the ATL Board to submit a list of projects from anywhere through upper region to the Governor and the General Assembly for them to consider the state issuing bond funds to help support or move those projects forward. These would be bonds where the repayment of those bonds would be at the state level. But every year by September 1, the ATL can submit this list of projects for consideration. So the first time a project list will be submitted would be by September 1 of this year for the state to consider putting funding in in the FY '21 budget. The FY '20 budget for us will start July 1 of this year, so it'll be for the following year's budget. But again, this is another way where the state can make some targeted investments to help move projects forward throughout the greater Metro Atlanta region. Now, even though that Board is, I guess, diverse and representative, we recognize that 16 people are still not reaching a broad enough audience. So what we're going to do with the ATL is we plan to work with, through the Atlanta Regional Commission and other neighboring metropolitan planning organizations to really get the word out. By the time we bring that stuff in front of the ATL Board, hopefully we've done our jobs and we've gotten local input from throughout the region. And what you see in front of you are two working groups that we're going to utilize to try to disseminate information further and in a more detailed and local level. On the left is what we call the Transit Executives Working Group. These are entities that have what we call, again, fixed route service, meaning they put out schedules and then regular scheduled service. Going beyond that, you see the transit operators working. We see Paulding County listed there. These are entities that have any type or form of transit in operation today. We're planning to utilize both these groups to bring at a more detailed level the day-to-day business that we're working at the ATL. And it doesn't do us any benefit to surprise anybody and certainly doesn't do us any benefit not to have gotten local input before we come back in front of the ATL Board. In addition to that, we're reaching out to the operators. And what I call your attention to on this slide is the first two rows are a lot of those fixed route operators that I mentioned. That last row is, for us, transit goes beyond just public transit or public transportation agencies. So we're having discussions with the Ubers and the lives of the ride-share companies as well as these scooters. I mean, if you think about how fast this area is changing, a year and a half, if I was to give this presentation a year ago, we wouldn't even be thinking or talking about scooters. Two years ago, it wasn't even a pigment in anyone's imagination. This is not going to be a substitute for local communities figuring out, do they want these here, how they're going to regulate them? But it is a recognition of the fact that these things are popping up and some people are utilizing them. Do they play a role in helping move people from point A to point B? These are some of the things that we're going to be looking at. And then, just a couple, I guess, tale of the tape. We're trying to do our work here at the ATL, understand the potential needs of various counties within the region. Like I said, we're already familiar with Paulding County's demand response. These stats, actually, one of the first things we're going to do is update them. I believe these are from 2014? Oh, do you remember? Okay, good. So we got them updated a few days ago. They weren't today. But again, we're aware of the service that you have and the significant number of trips. And of course, the express service run by the state. We have many Paulding County riders and we're looking at how we leverage the state's existing transit services to better serve the needs of any of the counties that are utilizing it. So these are all things that will factor in. And of course, we're also spending time making sure we understand the demographics of any of the counties because so much of this is about workforce and connectivity. So we're looking at all of this information. And then, lastly, we're going to give some interesting statistics. So we have a profile of citizens, but how are people getting to and from work? So like most of the Metro Atlanta area, most people drive alone. They have significant commute time coming from Paulding County. But when you look at the numbers on the far right of how many workers out here can rely on transit to get to and from work, it's not large numbers today. Now, some communities, they're perfectly fine with that. So I want to be crystal clear of this. The ATL is not coming in and changing the status quo. There's no cost to any of the counties from being in the jurisdictions. This is not about state control. We want to take a round-up approach in making sure that we identify whatever transits we need, if any there are, that are reflective of the values and the desires of the counties. So nothing automatically changes. This is just another new avenue to either, and some new mechanisms to either pursue funding or hopefully bring the benefits of the state, bringing the focus to help attract the federal dollars to our communities. So enough talk for a while. I've already hit what's on this slide in terms of the upcoming priorities, but we're working on that regional transit planning process. We'll develop the first plan this year and we'll be working on the creation of some regional policies that we think will help keep us, our competitive edge from both the economic development standpoint and workforce development standpoint. But with that, thank you for the opportunity to come out here and talk. I will definitely leave cards for you more than that and answer any questions as well.
Well, great report, Chris. I really appreciate it. I think the audience has got a lot of good information there. Are the meetings open to the public?
Absolutely. We hold our meetings. They're held in downtown Atlanta. They're open to the public. The information's on the ATL's website, atltransit.ga.gov. And we are just putting efficient touches on the ability to go online and watch them streamed live, so you don't have to travel all the way to Atlanta.
And you try to get around like this to the counties once a year or what?
Hopefully, more often than that. Right now, we're working, and I have some of my staff here.
Please introduce them.
Sure. I'll let them stand up. This is Scott Haggard. He's the head of our Government External Affairs. Jennifer LaRosa, also in our Government Affairs group, and Michaela Carter in our Communications group. And it might seem like a big group to bring with us, but so much of this is about local contracts. Our Government External Affairs team, you can't reach me, you can reach them. And then communication is what it's all about. So everyone's traveling with me to get a feel and flavor. Every community is different, and so we want to make sure we understand the pulse of that. But yeah, trying to get around to every single one, trying to get to all 13-county commissions within the next about 30 days. I think this is number five. So ain't more to go. Lock in the miles.
Well, thank you. Y'all helped me thank Chris Thompson and his team. Next is bid awards and I'm going to ask Ms. Pollard to answer or help with the presentation of the approval of the chairman in an agreement with Kelly Landscapes Management Incorporated for the roadside right-of-way turf maintenance services contract in an amount of $168,615.40. The contract provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging, and litter pickup of approximately 66 acres, 10.5 of which is median, and 54.44 acres of roadside shoulders on various county roads. Ms. Pollard?
Good morning. Most everything was in there, but we did receive four bids on March 8. Kelly Landscaping was not the lowest bid, but we have, it was advertised as a local business enterprise. And as most everyone knows, that's an attempt to award contracts locally as much as we possibly can. So they met the requirements of being the second-low bid as well as within 10% of the next bid. And so they have agreed to accept it in the amount of $168,615.40. Unless you have any questions, and George can be specific as far as what regulations are included.
Appreciate the backup material readings in the list of roads. Thank you for that.
Good morning. There's a significant amount of roads and intersections. The biggest ones in there are Bill Caruth Parkway, Seven Mills Connector. Those are the largest roads in there, Cedar Crest Road is in there, portions of it. Again, you know, we started this contract, this will be our fifth year. Kelly has done the work the last three years. Basically, we just want to maximize our investment when it comes to sod and landscape and make everything look as good as possible. I think Kelly's done a fine job over the last few years. As you know, aesthetics are everything when it comes to the county. That's why we spend money on litter pickup. That's why we do cutting on the safety, but also this type of moment. I feel it's a good, it's a good investment and I recommend more with it. I can answer any specific questions if you want. Last year, Dave, we posted, I think, a list of project locations for the trimming, or the turf mowing on the website. And we can do that again. I think during last year's conversion from our old website to our new website, it was a while somewhere inside space. So we go forward and put that on again if you'd like.
Put that under DOT. Please do that. Any questions? Thanks a lot, George. We're honored again to have Mr. Eric Johnson here with Comprehensive Program Services to give us an update on the jail. Eric? Yeah, Brian Ackers in here. He'd love to have you go up to his office. He's got a great second-floor view of the jail and how it's coming along. He's got a lot of good candy up there.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chairman. Thank you again for letting Comprehensive Program Services give you a jail update. I think, I think things are going very well out there considering all the rain and everything else. We'll get into some details. Lance Painter with Turner's here as well. So if you have any really detailed questions out there, I'll pull him up here. Again, quick update, jail website, pauldingjail.com, putting all pertinent information that we feel the public needs to see on that website. So let's get up to the project update with costs. So on the right, on the left side, you'll see the initial budget that we had and our update from today. One number really has changed, and that is the construction manager at risk. Back in November, November 13 specifically, we came to the Board of Commissioners with three significant issues that we're dealing with out there. One was rock, one was precast, and one was conformance set of drawings. We did change order number one to the tune of $923,012. That was approved. But let me back up real quick. When we came to you then, we felt the liability on all three issues at that meeting we reported would be $1,005,182.75. So working through all this stuff, we came to you with change order number one, which is the $923,012, which dealt with the conformance documents and the precast. So since then, we have been dealing with a lot of detail on the rock. There, Turner's been involved, Scott Green, the county, Bruce Coyle, NOVA Engineering. So through all that negotiation, change order number two, we're going to present to the county for execution, which will be $524,177. So if you add change order number one and number two, it comes in around $71,086 less than the number that we came to you with that we thought it was going to be in November at that Board of Commissioners meeting. So that's good news. And there's a lot of work, got a lot of detail, if anybody wants it, dealing with the rock and hauling. It was a really concerted effort and it worked out really well. Again, the rest of the numbers you see there, owner contingency, everything else has remained the same, including the $300,000 that we still are carrying for the county to purchase the Alpharetta Latinas as opposed to doing a Georgia Power Lease purchase. Next slide, what are some cost impacts that are still out there? As we've mentioned before, there was a burn pit, trash pit, exactly where we were putting the visitation center. And we're still dealing with that and we're saying that's going to be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000. We have NOVA on site. We're digging down, see if there's enough structural fill there. It's not really structural fill, but there's enough there to where we can go and actually come up from there without having to dig down and take out all eight feet of what's there. So we're going down, trying to mitigate what the costs are. That's why the number of flushways between $50,000 and $100,000. Exporting of excess soil, to be kept on site. Again, that's a little, we're dealing with a couple little things, demucking mud out there. We'll talk about schedule here in a minute, but we're still working through all those. That's a, no pun intended, that's a very fluid conversation we're having with the construction manager at risk. And then high-speed bi-hole doors at the Sallyport, that was something that was a requirement of the sheriff's office from the beginning. And through our evaluation of pricing and everything, for some reason or another, it was left off. The GMP, so it's not a new request whatsoever. It's something that was in the program that we failed to get into the GMP. That is a very competitive number. It's the same folks that did bi-hole doors at Douglas County Jail. Any quick questions on budget? I know I kind of went through that real quickly and we, I have a host of other members if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like the breakdown of your rock studies and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
And hauling, and the break, you have a hauling demand and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
And also, see what kind of yardage you have in that pit of substandard soil.
At the visitor's?
At the pit, how many yards?
At the visitor's center? Sorry, I'm getting older. I can't remember all this stuff. I've got to write it down. Okay, any other questions on budget? We have that very detailed for you. I can give you a sheet after this meeting if you'd like to. Okay, good. Progress, precast panels for LAC are complete. We had a couple little issues. Metromont's done a fantastic job. We had a little qualification on a couple panels. They got right on it and looks, looks great. CMU is in progress. Roofing at LAC is underway. The rest of it's done. Final slab on grade is poured. Thank goodness. Had a lot of, a lot of bad weather. And if you're out there, even though you get those double Ts on there, water still gets through where the double Ts kind of come together. So it was kind of a mess under there. And Turner, again, we'll talk schedule. Really did a good job mitigating that. Rooftop units have been installed to support housing. Steel cell installation is complete. Love to have a tour out there. It's a, it's a really, really, really good system that you have out there. State of the art. And then overhead roughens continue. Those are the steel cells that you see. Those, that has a special coating on the inside that is impermeable and it's all done in a perfect temperature-controlled facility up in Toccoa, Georgia. So they ship those all over the world, actually. As you can see, the masonry going on, precast panels, they look great. More pictures of a lot of roughing going on. All right, schedule update. All right, schedule update. So interior masonry should be done by this June, this summer. Interior build-out, you see, will be done by next September. Interior build-out of the housing by October, and the law enforcement this summer as well. So substantial completion, 1/27/20. Back at, in November, it was projected with all these issues we were dealing with, I think the number, Lance can correct me, I think it was April 20th, because there were so many unknowns. Working with them, even through all this rain, they've been able to pull all that stuff back. And right now, we have a substantial completion date of January 27th, 2020. So, they've almost made up collectively, the team has three months, and it's been a whole concerted effort with the county as well. Change order number two, you'll see, has the February 28th date, but this, right now, we're trending towards January 27th for substantial completion, which is, which is great. And there's the elevation. And I'm open for any questions.
It's been great for y'all over that forehead of schedule, with all the bad weather we've had. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thanks so much, Eric.
Hey, thank you very much.
Have no one signed up for public participation on agenda items today? We have two consent agenda items. Number one is adopt resolution 19-dash-07, a resolution in Pauling County, Georgia stating its support for a livables center initiative indoor community development assistance program application. Number two is authorize the chairman to sign agreement with Georgia Power Company to donate permanent easement on Pauling County Board of Commissioners property located at the southeast corner of Thomas Street, Murphy Drive, and State Route 61, Nathan D Boulevard. Would any of the commissioners like to move either of those two items to regular business?
Dave, I just have one request. Could you, as we're slipping, to give us a brief layman's explanation of item number one, please?
Yes, sir.
We'll be glad to be available. Planners in our acronyms are infamous. The Layton Regional Commission for several years has had a livables centers initiative program. They recently sort of merged that with their community development assistance program. I put me in door because the LCI program is switching to focus on transit, and I don't think our on-demand transit service qualifies us for that, so we're hoping to get a community development assistance program. And it would be to help fund a planning study, and my request is to look at, I'd like to think that the stars are aligned, it's not a perfect storm, with Wellstar Hospital, the widening of 92, the Greystone Headquarters, the sewer expansion to get to those headquarters. And then even if you look at the Aviation Academy at the airport, there's, there's some things I think in Pauling County we're missing. We don't have students at the Aviation Academy who want to live in the county. There's very few apartments that are available for them to look at. So we're looking at this area, maybe this area is where we'd like to focus for apartments, for office buildings, for, there'd be more primary care physicians adjacent to the hospital. Maybe this is the area, I have a feeling that someday in the future, Amazon will probably have a warehouse in every county, and they will know exactly what the residents of that county like, and they will stock that warehouse with that, so they can get it to you in days or hours. So we're hoping to get a community development assistance program to help us look at that area, to decide, do we need new zoning districts, do we need to reserve corners for special things, so that's, hopefully answers your question.
It does, thank you. I have to read the consent agenda item, and I, I read it again, and I read it a couple more times, and there was a lot of words in there. And I looked at that, and I appreciate, we have a backup resolution, but for public information, I do appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Under old business, we have none. Under new business, number one is discuss action for the Board of Commissioners to advance release the July 1st, 2019 payment of $137,500 to the Pauling County Airport Authority to assist them with their financial obligations required and the Federal Aviation Administration grant assurances. And Mr. Baker's going to report, and we also have the airport CEO, Terry Tibbetts in the audience, if any additional information is required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, before you today, when Mr. Tibbetts was here a couple of meetings ago, he gave a report and mentioned that this was all kind of on the horizon. This payment is a payment that's going to come due on January, July 1st of this year, and Mr. Tibbetts is requesting an early release of the payment pursuant to the 2014 IGA agreement, intergovernmental agreement. And this is to help the airport meet its financial obligations required under the FAA grant assurances. So this simply is just an advanced payment, instead of releasing it on time on, on July 1st, it would be releasing it early. And that's what Mr. Tibbetts is requesting, and he is here, and the board has any questions.
Want to have any questions?
Well, I don't know that I have any questions from Mr. Tibbetts, but I do, we do need some discussion on the board here. What they're asking is an advanced payment, and it's been described as an advanced payment. That would imply that next year they would get one payment. When Mr. Tibbetts was here, a couple meetings ago, I asked, what are you going to do on July 1st when you need more money? And he said it would be up to us. His second request at that meeting was that we consider restructuring the intergovernmental agreement, or that we consider bringing them back in to the county as a, as a department, at which point there would be no more payments, because there would be no more IGA, because it would be a department. I know we've had some initial conversations about that, some of us have, I know there's been some, a little bit of talk about how that might work. We've, we've got some, some issues, though, with trying to bring them back in, and I'm happy to look at every option to bring back into the county as a department. I don't think it ever, that IGA should have ever happened in the first place, it should have been a department all along. But there are some legal implications, and there's potential eliminations we have to get through. We also have some, some potential issues with HR and equity, and situations that we may have to resolve. So it's not a simple move to just bring them back in as a department. That said, I don't know that it's a safe assumption that by July 1st, that all of that's going to be worked out, and that they're going to be, you know, with a new IGA or with a department. So I, I'm concerned about treating this as an early release of, of the payment. And my question for the board here is, do we, would we be better off, instead, considering this, an extra payment? I know bills are going to be paid, and I'm not saying that they don't need to be paid. But if we release an early payment, the budget that Dave is working on with Tabitha to release for the chairman's budget, that line item is going to need to be reduced by half. And, and I don't think that we can responsibly go into the next budget cycle at this point, looking at that number as half of what it is planned to be based on the payment schedule and intergovernmental agreement. Any thoughts?
So you, you should say that it's just as an extra payment?
Yes, I mean, really, I, I see it needs to be, it needs to be seen as an extra payment. And I know this is getting to maybe a little bit of semantics of the issue here, is that the airport is looking to get some bills paid. And I understand that, and I'm not arguing that bills will need to be paid, but we're going to, if we, if we move forward and call this an early payment, and then the next year's budget, the, the amount that's budgeted for that IGA in the next fiscal year is going to be half of what it would have been otherwise. And if we can get through all of that before July, then that's not an issue. I don't know that we will. So we may get to July, and then we have to come in and say, well, we're going to, we're going to front the January payment in July, and then try to keep working. And it just feels to me that we should continue to budget, we have a, we have a good, we have an agreement that says we're going to pay so much per year. I think we need to leave the budget, can be paid that much per year until, until a new agreement is reached. And in that case, we can change the budget, or a whole lot better off budgeting for the bigger number and adjusting for the smaller number than we are budgeting for the smaller number and adjusting up to the bigger number.
So if I may summarize, you would make a case toward, this is a budget need, although it is the exact amount of one half the budget, or one, one payment, this is a payment that's what, twice a year. You would do the $137,000 possibly through the evening vote tonight, and then you would leave the, the amount needed, $100,000, $275,000 as part of the IGA as it is?
Yeah, so, I'm not thrilled with the idea of $137,000 on plan going to the airport. I understand, again, I understand what needs to be done, needs to be done. I think that if we say we're going to take, it's like, I see it as maybe getting an advance on your allowance, if you want to go get the baseball cards this week, and say, get it the next week, you want more, and you have to keep moving it up. And at some point, you've got to say, okay, we're not, we're not doing this the right way. If we, if we say we're going to front the July 1st payment, I mean, I've asked Tabitha, she says that we can, we can do that. But formally, by the, what's written here, releasing that payment early would require us to cut next year's budget item in half. And that would be under an assumption that it's not going to matter in the end, because we're moving forward to try to either restructure an IGA or, or bring them in as a department. But as I said, the legal and HR issues that complicate that move may not allow us to do that in the time and fashion in which we like, which means that there's going to be another payment due on July 1st. If they're, if we haven't, if we haven't restructured the IGA or brought them in as a department, Terry's going to be back here in June saying, hey, I need more money, because I have more bills to pay. We need to continue to plan to pay as structured in the IGA, the contract that we have, and we need to continue to plan for that. Any overage, we need to, we need to handle that, how we need to handle it, but I believe we need to continue to budget as, as laid out in that IGA. So, what I'm talking about here is not necessarily a, do we do it or do we not do it, it's, it's more of a how we do it. And if we do it this way, I think we're going to run into a budget issue for next fiscal year. And I'm just, I'm concerned. Can that clear it up?
I believe, I understand, Mr. Davis, I, since this is a work session, I'm going to ask Ms. Pollard, if you have any comments on that tab.
I doubt we have any comments. We're in the planning stages, so that's something that you could consider.
Well, I tell you, I'd love to say something, and, well, I've been through the financials of the airport, and just to let the public realize what's going on, it's not like Terry's out there overspending. There's a lot of legal fees and accounting fees that go along with it. I know because he's tied into the county, that, what's it called, that, kind of $750,000 of grants he has to do that extra audit and stuff like that. So, I mean, that's like $17,000 just by itself. Just in the last six months, sixty, almost $63,000 in legal fees. So it's not like he's out there just spending money left and right, he's basically just trying to keep the lights on. So, I agree with Ron, so, but, again, I think, being just thrown out there, maybe just let him get, have it over for a while. I agree with Ron.
You have the other comments? No? You want to? All right, to the new business number two, it's discuss action to adopt resolution 19-dash-08, authorizing the executive, I'm sorry, authorizing the execution of professional development training expense reimbursement agreement for the fire department, Chief Kelford.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got some great things happening in the fire department, and we're wanting to help our employees out at EMT school. We're trying to get accredited by the state, we're about to finish up with that, to be able to teach EMT school. A lot of these personnel can't afford to go outside the public schools, go EMT school, it costs over $5,000, $6,000 to do that. So we're going to plan on teaching it here free of charge for them, all they have to do is spend their time. One of the things that we wanted to do was do an agreement with them, an expense agreement, contract, saying that, or a commitment, more or less, where they had to sign the contract and have to stay employed for two years. If they leave within two years, they would have to reimburse the taxpayers for the class. And that's basically what we did, is Mr. Phillips worked on her contract, he can speak to the legality of it, but that's basically all this is in short form.
That you can say.
Be glad to answer your question.
Level of interest that has been shown?
Yes, there's been a big interest shown. Forty percent of our personnel do not have any kind of EMT certification, and these guys need that to advance in the department, and that's part of their career path. We held some preliminary meetings, and we had over 30 that responded, came to our meetings that wanted to take the class.
Joey, what, what percentage of medical calls, overall calls are medical?
Yeah, we, last year, we ran the numbers, last year we ran over 15,000 calls, and about 75 to 80% of those are medical or rescue calls. That was a good segue with the positive, particularly Pauling, that's, that's basically the type of calls we're running, and they're increasing quite a bit. And it's hard to get an EMT certification for these guys, it's, it's a big commitment. And when you're talking about taking money out of their pocket and being able to advance, it's hard on them, and we want to just make it easier on our employees, and of course, that does help the department as well as the citizens.
Now, I appreciate you being proactive and helping them to get these.
It's a team effort, we, a lot of people have been working on this, we've been trying to get this done for a couple of years.
Fantastic, thank you. Number three, to discuss action to approve the relocation of the Veterans Memorial from its present location on Watson Drive to a new location in Veterans Park, and authorize the funding in the amount of $18,200. And Mr. Green, our operations manager, is going to present at least the first part, then we have a couple of special guests.
Thank you. I do have some follow-up points to hit on, but I want to let you know this project was requested and sponsored by the American Legion Post 111. And for background purposes, I'd like to introduce them, and then ask John Black to present a little bit on that before I talk. If you would stand, we've got John Black, Jerry Rochelle, and Bill Fleisch here with the American Legion. And John Black, who is the committee chairperson, is going to give you a little more background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. As I say, Jerry Rochelle, he's our executive board member and a member of this committee for the relocation of the monument. Bill Fleisch, he is the current commander of the American Legion Post. I'm past commander, and several years ago, when I was commanding the post, following a meeting at the monument, a memorial, I think it was Memorial Day, a friend of mine came up to me and spoke about, this is not the place for this anymore. That had been a goal of mine since I first became involved in the politics at the American Legion Post. Me and that friend rode around that day and looked and talked, I think that guy was the gold star back there. We rode around and talked about, this was a good place at one time from the center of Dallas, it was located around the courthouse, it's not that way anymore. The best thing I can do is read you a letter, and this is following favorable resolve from y'all. It's not posted yet, and it won't be if we don't get a favorable resolve, but should be. We, we would like to present this letter, and we're asking for money. The commission has been asked, that's how I got here, we, we're, we're asking to help us do this, and when I say help us do this, we want to help you do it also. So, we're going- So we're willing to support your funding with what we can do. Just for a little history and the letter, I'm going to read the letter and it's, let me say, it'll be presented, you know, providing a favorable resolve of this issue. To the citizens of Paulding County, the topic, relocation of Veterans Memorial from the Watson Drive location, the Veterans Park location in Paulding County Watson Complex. In history, 1994, American Legion Post 111 provided leadership to the construction of the Veterans Memorial. Financial support came from Paulding County citizens and the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. The Veterans Memorial was dedicated on June 1st, 1996 on county property currently located on Watson Drive behind Georgia Highlands College. In funding, in order to relocate the Veterans Memorial from its current location in Veterans Park, funds got to be required. American Legion Post 111 is assuming the lead in soliciting additional necessary funds from the citizens of Paulding County. We will contact various clubs, organizations, businesses, and we will provide labor if needed. Rationale for location, relocation of Veterans Memorial. The Veterans Memorial Monument is a meaningful monument dedicated to the glory of God and honor of those who served and in memory of those who died for their country and the cause of freedom. Eighty-nine names, including eight from World War I, 52 from World War II, nine from the Korean War, eight from Vietnam War, and 12 from Iraq and Afghanistan wars. The current location has become less significant with the construction of the Watson Complex. County officers and services relocated the Watson Complex in 2008 and Veterans Park was established. Except for Memorial Day and Veterans Day services, the Veterans Monument is rarely viewed. This significant monument needs to be visible to the residents of Paulding County daily as a place of honor for those who served and remember those who died in service of our country. Current location on Watson Drive is uncovered, has limited parking, is difficult to locate and to access, no restroom facilities, a cover for intimate weather, sufficient parking visibility, they are in systems. Veterans Park already has a formal pavilion that houses five pointed star representing each branch of the military. The proposed site at Watson Complex will provide a more visible sight for all ages of citizens of Paulding County. Paulding County citizens should be proud of and reminded often the fact of the approximately 160,000 residents of Paulding County, there are approximately 10,000 veterans. This letter will also say how to donate, checks be made payable to American Legion Post 111 with monument relocation indicated in the fourth section of the check and checks will be mailed from American Legion Post 111, Post Office Box Dallas, Jory 30132. All donations are tax deductible as the American Legion holds a 501(c)(19) designation. Providing a favorable resolution from y'all, we just build our hopes and prayers, y'all agree with us that this is important too. Not me, not the American Legion Post, not just the citizens, but everybody, including future generations, and to be a permanent place for this monument as we feel it should be. And I thank you for your time for listening.
Thank you, just a couple of things I'd like to add. This is, it's a bit of a challenging project. This is a 23-year-old monument and there are no plans that we can find. We do have experience both with staff and with the American Legion on sort of how it was put together. And we've got to work through this and make sure it's done safely. Obviously, it's very important that we move it and not damage it. The cost of that monument, monument to replace it is much more than the cost of this project. I don't even know what the cost would be. But we've got to take most care of this is approved to make sure it's done successfully. It would also be done in phases. The very first thing we need to do is actually move the monument itself, then rebuild the, the plaza area around it. And we'll employ competent contractors to do that work with plenty of insurance. So if something does happen, it would delay, but we could, we could replace it so that we're, we would not become responsible for its damage. I think it's a better plan based on what they propose is not try to preserve what is there and then have a clone of it or another copy built on Veterans Park. We really want to take that history and that, that past effort of community involvement with the Legion and the commission and the citizens to build that monument, but to move it where probably is more fitting in the Veterans Park and build on, build some history It will be a, a community effort. The American Legion, county departments will be involved in this to reduce the cost. And this, the group, American Legion is bringing us a, an offer to sponsor it through some donations. That is not a prerequisite that we're asking the commission to consider in exchange for having this work done. I think the commission is, is being asked to move the monument within a reasonable cost to get it to this new location. The additions to that monument to replace like landscaping and the walkways and maybe make it better and enhance it is really what the, the additional volunteer effort and donations would be used for. And we would let the American Legion head that effort, but anything they do raise for that effort, we would put into that work and be documented. So the commission would not be paid back for the, the $18,000 we're asking you to approve. Their money and their contribution will need to make it better. And that would be the approach we, we would like and we would recommend. Many, many groups ask of the commission and sometimes they don't have anything to bring so much and in this case, I'm, I'm happy to say they are sponsoring with both funding and with sweat equity and through other contributions. It'll be in three parts, moving the monument, replacing the, the flatwork or the skirting around it, and then lastly, the sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, and some of the things that can come later. We'll get the poor project done. We would hopefully have something to celebrate in two months from now, Memorial Day, May 27th. Is that right? It's a Monday before a commission meeting. So that's, that, that would be the good news we'd want to celebrate if, if you all approve that. I'm have to recommend approval and to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you all of you. This has been going on for a year and then John, the discussion and bringing fruition, very, very exciting to the county. Everybody uses Veterans Park, which is thousands of people, way more than whatever hit up behind the old First National Bank building. So, you know, whether it's right for wishes or other events that take place right around this Pentagon area, there'll be a lot of people that get to see what that is and what it means. Any other comments?
Just a quick question maybe for Tabitha, but it's not a lot of money we're talking about, but we do get to account for every penny. So where does this submit any questions?
This would be a current year added to the current year budgeted expense. So come as a budget amendment at the end of the year and we'll be offset by any additional revenues that we've received throughout the year, hopefully. And if that number's not there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Review business number four is to discuss action for the board commissioners to approve the 2019 Paulding County Speed Detection Device Permit, list of roads of Paulding County number 02-28-19. Mr. Jones.
By Georgia law, all roads eligible to operate speed detection devices have to have speed limits supported by traffic engineering studies so locals can operate those speed detection devices. The speeds have to be determined as safe and reasonable by the Georgia Department of Transportation. This permit request, list of roads is for seven additional roads to add to our permit. Our studies are done, they basically look at the 80th percentile of speed, what speed the traffic was traveling at, the road characteristics, the pace speed, roadside development, parking, crash history. The list of roads that we have submitted have been reviewed and approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Basically what we're asking y'all to do is approve this list of roads so we can return it to GDO which will then return it to the Georgia Department of Public Safety for approval to that, so the sheriff's department can operate radar on those roads.
Any questions?
Another one for you, Mr. Jones. Number five is to discuss action to approve a supplemental agreement in the amount of $45,050 with Atkins North America Incorporated for construction engineering with, and inspection services for an additional 520 hours.
Yes, this is for inspection services for the Dallas Hackworth Highway Bridge projects over Pickett's Mill Creek and Possum Creek. Those projects are winding down. We actually done some road work on the Pickett's Bridge approaches last Friday, getting that paved very open. Again, like I said, this is for construction engineering services, basically contract administration, inspection, materials testing, quality control on these projects, making sure that the county is getting what we're paying for from contractors. This will take us through the end of June and I don't mean to say we'll have to come back for this again. I've had some discussions with the county operations manager and also the commission spoken about this cost and possibly ways to maybe lower this cost of execution.
Yes, sir, I'd give it a saving not having to use your own personnel.
Well, the, the thing is, you know, with construction engineering inspection, you're, you're paying for a person who has the ability to basically manage a whole project. The person out there right now, he can pretty much do everything when it comes to CDI. So there's a cost involved in doing that. I think you found out probably in the past, when you have projects and you don't have anybody inspecting for the county, you may not get exactly what you paid for. So to have a really good inspector, there's, there's a charge for that in the construction industry right now, specifically roadway. There is a shortage of good inspectors. As you know, roadway costs, roadway prices for work has gone up. That's also affected the inspection part. So I have some thoughts and I'd like to discuss in the future with y'all about how we can possibly go forward in the future and somehow reducing the cost as much as we can. We're still going to have to pay for CDI services if we want to get good quality projects, but I believe there are mechanisms that we can use to help improve the cost. Again, because obviously the more likely we can save and put towards roadway projects itself versus inspection, the better off we are.
Well said. Thank you. This is the slide number six, to discuss action to award the horizontal directional drilling of an eight-inch HDP E water main under Pumpkin Vine Creek at Mount Olivet Road to Benton, Georgia LLC with a cost not to exceed $90,955.73. This is Lori Ashmore.
In November of 2018, after one of the many rain events that, that we were having in the fall, we had a pipe failure on a water line that crossed the route, the, the stream bed of Pumpkin Vine Creek. We have been working with two dead end systems since then. We're feeding east of Pumpkin Vine Creek off Highway 61 and west of Pumpkin Vine Creek off of 278 versus, and so we've got two dead end, we've got dead end lines. We have a, we have been working on, on a solution. It's a very challenging area, excuse me, very steep banks on either side of the creek. And our engineers really looked at many ways of, of replacing that pipe to find the most cost-effective way to, to get that pipe replaced and restore that loop. We have determined, we've determined that directional drilling of HDPE line under the creek was our best method. We do have, we have already gotten right of entries on either side of, of the creek to be able to, to do the work necessary on the surface to get that line installed. Solicited some pricing of various methods and Benton, Georgia was the, was our lowest pricing for that HDPE line. And taking into account the rock that we anticipate encountering, we've got a, a quote on that of $90,955.73.
Any discussing questions?
What kind of timeframe do we start process drilling?
I actually think that Daryl had told me that they're ready to begin.
Thank you, Lori. That's the conclusion of regular business, so we have need of executive session today for real estate and pending potential litigation. There's none of the public have signed up for non-agenda items, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for those two reasons.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, or second?
Second.
Second. Mr. K. Carl, as a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm, we adjourned executive session. I'll call the regular session of the board commissioners' work session back to order.
All right, now it's back. So I can tell it's a small.
We've got court. And just, nobody has any comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion when you adjourn.
Mr. Davis, or second?
Second.
And all those favors, say aye.
Aye.